Good evening, the meeting of the Lake Forest Park Committee of the Whole for April 22nd is about to start. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, none, so we'll move ahead. Is there any public comment? And this portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council on agenda items or any other topic the council might have purview or control over. If the comments are of a nature that the council does not have influence or control over, then the deputy mayor or presiding officer may request that the speaker suspend their comments. The council may direct staff to follow up on items brought up by the public. Comments are limited to a three-minute time limit. So are there any? There, I see no one in the room who would want to comment in public. Matt, is there anyone online?
We do not have any attendees and no one signed up.
Okay, so with that, public comment is closed. Our first item is Resolution 241948, creating a temporary policy advisory task force for climate planning. Welcome, Community Development Director.
This first item is a continuation of a first touch or first introduction. Earlier this year, we missed an opportunity for a second touch in the last council meeting. And with this committee of the whole, we're hoping to achieve that. And then it's on the agenda for this Thursday night's regular meeting. The city received, a little background for the record, the city received a, an award in the amount not to exceed $500,000 from Washington State Department of Commerce for climate planning, to fulfill new requirements, new legislation that came out of Olympia recently. House Bill 1181 primarily. To do that, to perform that scope of work, we today released a request for qualifications. It'll be published on Wednesday, and we hope to proceed with that. Step one of that scope is creation of a climate policy advisory team. At the introduction, we gave the general suggested makeup. The feedback from the council at that time was to go back to these groups, the Climate Advisory Committee, the Planning Commission, and the Tree Board, and get feedback. We did that the first week of April, attended all of their meetings. I can summarize the feedback as favorable. That was the word most used. So the first meeting at CAC, the comment that comes to mind is this is everything that we could ask for. Well-supported, they have time, and they can continue with other work in their normal setup, whatever that may be. Or however that's decided for the Climate Action Plan and so forth. The next meeting that Wednesday night was Tree Board, same consensus, same availability, highly encouraging to them as far as their lens of tree policy and what they're tasked with. The next night, we were at Planning Commission, and as you can guess, the, the, the feedback was similar but different. The perception was, this is great, but are you asking any of us to be on it? Because they're fully tasked, and so there's a bandwidth issue that I don't want to mix with their sentiments about going forward with this task force, or what it's for, its purpose, or the duration. But they are stretched then. So what I asked each, the Planning Commission and each of those committees was to think about nominations, or whether you'd like to do it, and we'll, we'll come back to you for that item. Depending on how tonight goes, if there's any remaining issues, or Thursday night, if there's an action, first week of May, we, we plan on getting that feedback. So if there's any difference between the three, it's that the Planning Commission is very busy and tired. But that's the general feedback we got. Open to any questions or any follow-up that you would like me to pursue in the next two days. It's anticipated that Thursday night, we'd be requesting action.
Thank you very much. Questions, colleagues? Comments? Councilmember Golden.
Yeah, thanks. First comment, I'm glad we took the time to go to the three committees to get their feedback, and since they're favorable, I'm favorable. Just a clarification, since this would be a membership of nine, that means once we've gotten five people on board, the task force could start meeting. And so if, for instance, if for whatever reason it was sluggish getting enough buy-in from very busy boards, as long as we have five, that would be enough to get things kicked off, correct?
That would be correct. So whether it's five, seven, or nine, we would, we would like to at least start with an odd number and try and achieve seven or nine. And the words we inserted in the materials were up to three members of the CAC, up to three members of the Planning Commission, suggested one member of the Tree Board, and then the remainder being interested citizens with two council, or one council liaison and an alternative if need be. But the insertion of up to takes into account that we may not get those perfect numbers. And then to respond to your comment, it is important to get started along that course that ends next June 2025. So if we have five at the beginning, we could function.
Vice Chair Baratoni.
Thank you. Thank you, and appreciate Director Hoffman, your hard work in talking to all these groups and understanding about the bandwidth issue. I see from the proposal that the task force is going to be around until summer or fall of 2025, which is quite the commitment. I'm wondering, how often do you see this task force meeting?
The materials before you state at least monthly. More often as needed. The deliverables for the grant are due June 15th, 2025, so most of the work will be there. And then the scope in the grant and the scope of whatever contract we sign would allow for some continuation work, likely at City Council after the grand deliverables, but leading to adoption. So that's why it's also monthly through maybe fall of 2025.
Other questions or comments? Councilmembers on the phone, any questions or comments? Okay.
Just briefly, I was just looking at, we don't technically say up to three members of the Climate Action Committee, so I think that would just be a, an edit that we want to make before it comes back. So it's clear that, that the up to applies to both the Planning Commission and the CAC.
We can do that. I think the up to was added to the cover, cover sheet, and we could add it to Section 1 of the ordinance.
Thank you. Councilmember Lebo.
Thank you. I, I don't have any comments. I'm appreciative of the work that has been done, and I look forward to the committee being advised. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? If not, we will move on to your next item, Director. That is B, draft ordinance amending Chapter 18.52 of the Lake Forest Park Municipal Code signage to bring the sign code into compliance with recent legal decisions. So thank you very much. I know this has been percolating around for some time and appreciate the fact that we're actually getting to this at this point.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. This came before the council December 14th of last year as an introduction. As you know, I wasn't here. And that was preceded by lengthy work at the Planning Commission, and we have the videos and the materials and so forth. The challenge I'm having is, at this point, do we go backwards or forwards? And if we go forward, what does that consist of? And the general feeling I have as director is that there's good work there that we should go forward. Going forward, the, the reason that I'm reintroducing it tonight was to at least fix one issue we had, which I'm not sure what caused it, but there's a transposition, if that's a word, transposing an overlapping of text in the materials for the packet on December 14th. I tried to fix that for tonight and have now discovered that somewhere in municipal code is causing it, whether it's hyperlinks or some sort of setting in the original document. And so I wanted to fix that tonight, acknowledge that I've reviewed the tape and the questions from the council from December 14th. Don't have answers to all of them, but understand what those comments are. And then I was going to work through them as I decipher exactly what happened at Planning Commission, compare that to existing code, and then be able to respond what that difference is. But given that the packet is in municipal code, still has a couple of those overlapping texts and quite substantial. In one, there are five and a half sections or subsections that are overwritten into one almost solid line. And then in printing it out as a PDF, I have it narrowed down to just one, but all the text is there. So what I would like to do to go forward, my suggestion is possibly have more discussion tonight so that when I do my deep dive and compare it to my past experience with signage and different scenarios, temporary signs, commercial, non-commercial, and start to answer those questions that we're all working from a common document. I can fix those overlapping issues and some other interpretation issues I have by starting with what's in the code, using that as a base document, and making it larger, but putting the strikeout underlined over the entire chapter. The, the problem I'm having is that we're not starting from zero. I'm, I'm looking at material that was at Planning Commission for a lengthy period of time. When I read it, I am at fault because I start to second guess it based on prior experience. What I want to do is honor the work that came out of the Planning Commission, focus on that, but understand it. And the way I would do it is overlay it over existing code. Most of the questions from December 14th deal with how other sections of the municipal code or subsections in this chapter deal with each other. Home occupations, for instance, non-conformities. Those are not contained in there, but tell the whole story of how we enforce sign code, how we review and permit sign code. So in order to get to a point where we can thoroughly discuss all the scenarios about commercial, non-commercial, temporary, I need, I need to create that, understand it, and then go through the individual comments and questions from the December 14th meeting. And then the other two, three primary steps you're already aware of. Department of Commerce review, do the CIPA review for this, and then City Council second touch potential action in a public hearing before that later this year.
Thank you very much. I, I wanted to suggest before I open it up to comments and questions that, that it, it, I understand what you're saying, and I certainly would welcome knowing what the Planning Commission did and any, any changes or clarifications or additions you would suggest as well. I think we want to be able to look at that. On top of that, City Attorney Pratt was very much involved. So I think the prospect of another draft that is cleaned up, but that also reflects perhaps another review by City Attorney Pratt, as well as your suggestions based on your experience and, and reading of the document. That would be great because it is not as straightforward. This whole issue is not as simple and straightforward as it might seem at first glance. So I appreciate all those comments. We may need to have more opportunity for discussion than just the minimum three-touch if you go back to considering the last December meeting, the first touch. So with that, I'll open up to my colleagues for questions or comments. Yes, Council, Councilmember, good.
I remember from December that a lot of the discussion was revolving around definitions. And so after looking at some of our code myself, it looks like there are some definitions that need to be brought up to date for a variety of different reasons. Maybe a more inclusive list of definitions as to, they've changed some terminology, obviously, with the code coming out of Washington, and we have our own terminology, but possibly someone should look at definitions as a whole and bring those up alongside this. Thank you.
I could, I could certainly do that, and the level of detail that it would be, would be from a lens of enforcement. So I would take a scenario, or you know, several scenarios, but I'd work one scenario at a time. Temporary signs, what are all the sections that apply to that? What are the definitions? If there was a violation, what would the definitions need? Are they internally consistent? What brought this to mind that requires that work is at first blush, by, for example only, if you look at the definition of temporary sign, it says 90 days or less. Then you go to the temporary sign for multifamily and single family, and it says indefinitely. That could be seen either way. Your first reaction is, oh no, it's inconsistent. And then you think about it, it may be consistent if you look at the code in entirety, where it defines a temporary sign, says 90 days or less, allows it more in certain areas, and then restricts it in others like the right of way. I'm not at that depth yet, but in the definitions, there may be opportunity not to go back to Planning Commission, but to suggest or amend with the City Council so that we can go forward. I don't think they'd be substantial, but we would exhaust all possibilities.
I do believe that that's an example, a very good example, and that's one where I think the intent of the Planning Commission was to have different categories of, or different placements of temporary signs that had different, different time periods allowed. So because people were thinking of signs that are posted on, you know, a residential fence for indefinite periods of time, so that's a very good example. Other questions or comments?
The other example that I can think of is the new terminology, like middle housing, single family, the work from home, you know, what is, what is commercial? That's what I was thinking of also.
So nevertheless, this may take more time than just dust it off and, and move forward. So appreciate the fact that this is more complicated than it might seem at first glance. Councilmember Lebo.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. How does political signage fit into this sign code?
A political sign and any amendments mostly pertain to revisions due to Reed versus Gilbert. In order to define, if I'm walking down the right of way and I see a sign, in order to define it as a political sign, I need to read it. It needs to say, vote Joe Smith, et cetera. So that most of the changes would be in that regard, then lumps them into a definition based on size, description, how it's mounted, where it can go, so that I don't have to read it. That's primarily the non-commercial changes that we put into code.
In other words, Councilmember, the content of the sign is not what can be regulated. That was the purpose of updating the signage code to make it compliant with law.
Okay, are there limitations on the number or duration of how long a political sign may be up?
There are, but I haven't exhausted all scenarios. The different types are single, well, there's an example of other code that we may need to update in time if we adopt middle housing. Single family from multifamily from commercial to business to town center, they're different zones. So there are some consideration or numbers that I see. Front yard of a single-family home is much different than three miles of highway right of way. And, but they all need to be consistent because I can't read the sign to find it political, but I can be aware of the property, the property type, the type of sign, and any code standard that would regulate the number, the size, and the frequency or time limit for that type of sign.
Councilmember Lebo, is, are you, is that, do you have a follow-up or?
Just said it would be helpful to understand what do you see as the time limits, for example, on political signs?
I haven't exhausted all scenarios. I'd be most interested in pursuing planner strips, behind sidewalks, open space, critical areas. The most certain that I've seen is single family. The definition says 90 days or less, it's a temporary sign. For RM and RS zones, it says you could have them indefinitely, but you could have five. And, and so I want to make sure that's consistent. If I'm out there regulating it or enforcing it, or responding to a property owner or a neighbor, I want to make sure that's consistent. What's less known to me is how many you could have in a length of right of way. I don't know that there is a, an amendment in, currently in this language that speaks to that.
To, to follow up, in the right of way, there is, there are more time limitations, but if you put it on your property, the time limitations for the right of way don't apply necessarily. So it, it, these are complicated issues that the Planning Commission did struggle with as well.
So just to follow up, for example, if you run in a primary and you have 90 days, then you can put up your signs, but then if you're in the general election, you would have to remove all your signs and place them again?
In my past experience, that's been the case. By standard practice, acknowledging that the community doesn't want to see a lot of sign pollution, candidates were consistent with King County, but took it upon themselves to put them out there for four weeks, five weeks to the primary. Then they were almost entirely cleaned up the day after the primary. They met code by coming out four, five, six weeks before the general. It depends on how the code's written. To me, those are two separate instances. I'm not sure the amendments reflect that, but a primary election is an event. A general election is an event. So as I go through the fine tuning, if there's a sign that I need to write a letter for, I want to make sure that the code anticipates that occasion.
Councilmember Riddle.
Thank you. Yeah, I also had the same concern about political signage, so I'd like to see where you end up with that research. As I look through this, I'm thinking, I mean, we have reasons for doing our code certain ways, but it's going to be more businesses that are looking at permanent signs and maybe residents that are looking at temporary signs. And I'm wondering if it would make sense for us to re-envision this as a permanent sign section that has all the criteria around, and then a temporary sign section, because it's really hard to kind of pop around and through, especially for folks who are putting temporary signs in their front yards. Those are the folks that are going to be the least comfortable navigating a municipal code to understand what it is that, that we're supposed to be doing. And I understand that the Community Development Department can create literature that cleans this up and makes it easier to read, but then it's just kind of, how do we communicate this easily to the community? Knowing that it's the, it's the Black Lives Matter signs, it's the political signs. Those are the ones that individuals are putting out, and so we wanted them to be able to understand what, what works, what, what laws are around, what they're doing. So just something to think about as you're revisiting this in your own time.
And I also have your comment from December about the permit application criteria and copy. We'll, we'll follow up separately on that issue.
I wanted to just say that if it's your own property, I don't believe you have to get a permit unless it gets to a certain size. That was my recollection, but it's been quite a while. So, yes, Councilmember Golden.
Thanks, and, and I appreciate your work. I know this is, you inherited much of this, and it is surprisingly complicated. Have a couple of clarifying questions. So the first, there's a phrase that shows up a lot, square feet in area per side. And when I read that, I get confused because it makes it sound like the side of this table is seven square feet, which doesn't make sense to have an area as a length. So is that meaning to say like the front and the back of the sign have a square footage of three square feet? As opposed to like the top and the bottom and the sides of the sign?
Most signs, most signs would measure the...
What I'll call width. The assumption is they're flat. Commercial's a little different because you have box signs, canned signs, you know, wood signs and so forth, but primarily for temporary signs, most signs that we see, they're flat. If they're mounted on a pole and have a width, I've seen some codes regulate how, how big the can can be. Most signs are flat, have two sides. If both sides are exposed, you just measure length times width. Usually it's, is it one and a half by, or two by three, easy dimension? And if the code regulates it and says you shall have a square footage, the assumption is that's on each side. It, it would be awkward to go out and enforce and say, well, you have the right size sign, the right height, but you can't have two sides, so you need to turn your sign around, crush your name out on the back. So it's, the assumption is the, whatever the length times wit, width on one side, and then you have the other side too, equals one side.
Thanks for clarifying. So yeah, and so side means front and back in this case. So it was one of those things that I, from like a geometry standpoint, I was just confused by what that meant. And so thinking about the public, making it as clear as possible, like what the plain meaning of it is. And then my other comment, it, it kind of comes back to political signs. So if you go to page 25 in the packet, this is Section 185280, Paragraph 6. It says that in the public right of way, no more than six signs displayed citywide in the right of way for the same purpose. And I think it's something we probably want to have a conversation, what should that number be? If you set the number too high, you're more prone to nuisance signs. If you set the number too low, it means that it becomes hard for a political candidate. If you only have, let's say, six signs along 522 plus 104 plus Perkins, et cetera. And so where's that sweet spot? And obviously, we can't favor, we can't have different limits for political versus non-political, but what's the sweet spot for us there? And related, I wonder if temporary should be, if we made it 120 days? If we work back, if people put their signs up about a month in advance of the primary, that's the beginning of July, four months from beginning of July gets you to the beginning of November. So that covers primary and general season. So I, I wonder if changing 90 to 120 for temporary would solve that aspect of, of temporary political signage?
It, it would, and those are examples of amendments that would further clarify, resolve scenarios and not require us to go back to Planning Commission. You could do that at the council level. And if the, the struggle I'm having when I review this material is just that, I'm not starting from zero. So I want to honor what the Planning Commission did, but by no means can, does that mean that it can't be amended at City Council to reflect? So I'm open to suggest, suggesting and amending before we come back for any, any future review. And, and it may be that the suggestions solve those types of issues in line with keeping it clear and simple.
I, I would say also, I don't think that that would be offensive to the Planning Commission because some of these are the very issues they grappled with, and they came down with a recommendation, but that didn't mean that they opposed other, other viewpoints. Councilmember Riddle.
Thank you. I was looking through, trying to figure out where we do flags and how we describe that flags, either when they are or are not considered signage. And I'm seeing a lot of the, the, the word flag is, is in a lot of the strike through. So it doesn't seem like we have any language left that helps us understand whether a flag is considered a sign, especially if it has words on it or, or whatnot. I just want to make sure that we're really clear about that going forward. So I don't know, Director, if you have any thoughts on where it's covered in this current code or, or where it needs to be looked at again?
My, my intuition tells me that it is. They've simplified it. But part of the problem of not having the code in entirety... I, my, my intuition tells me that it is. They've simplified it, but part of the problem of not having the code in entirety with the amendments over it, you can't discern that. And then you get caught in the which version are you looking at? And then you go to the existing code as adopted and it gets too confusing. So I think I could fix that. Then the question comes up, how are flags treated? No, they are not signs, but then I could show you those references and definitions and how they're regulated or not regulated. But what's clear is the intent is they are not signs.
I, I believe banners can be signs though, so that's the, that's where there's uh, certainly, this is why this whole topic uh, was something that took the planning commission a lot more time than they expected. They thought they'd talk about it in a couple of meetings. And uh, those kind of complexities are things I think the council will have to grapple with, but first we'd, we'd like the thoughts from our uh, director. Yes, Council, Councilmember Furtianni.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And uh, um, thanks, Director Hoffman, uh, for your answers and your comments that uh, say, you know, are saying, you know, I'm trying to figure out where we are in this process and uh, you know, what was the planning commission thinking? Harken back to this idea that we've had recently as a council to put a preamble in front of the section that we uh, um, kind of explain why we are doing the thing we are doing. So when these kinds of questions arise, we remember the motivation of the previous councils on this particular section of code. And I'm wondering if this would be an appropriate place to basically put such a preamble.
It, it would be as long as it's brief and it, it, it gives context. So whether it's a purpose statement uh, and is held to a paragraph, there is one already there that talks about why the city does this, um, but it's not in this draft. By, by producing this new version, you would see that have the opportunity to add why this effort is being done.
Any other questions or comments before we move on? So we will look forward to hearing back from you and uh, I think that we will uh, not assume that we're going to have only one or two more touches before we wrap this up. I think we can reasonably assume that we'll be reviewing a new, a new draft uh, at, at, at the next opportunity. And so I don't know that you'll be ready with that cleaned up version that you're talking about, more readable version for the council meeting on Thursday. So I am aware of some of your other responsibilities. So what is, and I, I realize we've taken time for you to try to uh, get your footing in the job, in the new job before having this come forward. So while I don't want it to lag and get lost in the shuffle, I also want to make sure we're reasonable on, on the schedule. So what, i- if this comes back on Thursday, what would you expect to do on Thursday?
Um, there's, there's no scenario where signs would come back on Thursday.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you.
Literally every hour between now and then.
What is your scenario for when signs would come back?
Well, I think that the next step is to create that document or version that honors the planning commission. When I have that, I can, I can actually list and begin to analyze and in my spare time, when the phone's not ringing, it takes a lot of thought.
Yes.
Because every type of sign, every location, every standard is completely different than the other. To address signs is an easy matter. To address types of signs and enforcement and carry it all the way through to exhaustion, how you're going to code enforce it, how you're going to educate, um, is highly detailed. So the time-consuming part is as I get to those points where you analyze it and can means test it with looking at different videos and discussions at planning commission, understand their suggestion, what they're trying to achieve, then I could form my recommendation.
Could I suggest also, I believe a lot of this conversation was guided by the city attorney. Uh, and a lot of the suggestions were, and conversation back and forth with the planning commission was guided by the city attorney. So uh, I think we would want to make sure we have that consideration in the package as well. So do you think uh, sometime in June is reasonable?
Yes.
Okay. So let's assume that we will hear back with you on a date where you will come back in June. So that gives you four different, or not four different weeks, because we don't have four different weeks of meetings, but uh, different opportunities. It could come back here or it could come to the full council.
Uh, and the, the primary reason is that once you start touching it and looking into it, you can't stop.
Right.
If you stop for two weeks, you're starting over. You know, you need to
I understand, and that's why I was saying it may be even doing that, that thought process in part at some stage with the city attorney too, because she had strong opinions on some things too.
Absolutely, and not just for case law.
Yes.
Reed Richards Gilbert, the Austin case, but for how things would uh, be enforced or read or, or be consistent.
Exactly. Okay, we will hear back from you in um, in June and in the meantime, oh, Councilmember Lebo. Yes.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify one of the comments I made earlier in relationship to a comment from Councilmember Goldman under the, um, this was on page twenty-five, section fifteen, pardon me, eighteen uh, fifty-two oh eight. A, I, I'm not in favor of a limitation on camp, number of campaign signs on the right of way. So if so paragraph six was intended to limit campaign signs to six on right of ways, I would not be in favor of that.
So Councilmember Lebo, knowing that that would apply to all signs on the right of way, uh, does that change your view?
Uh, I would start from the perspective of, I, I'm not in favor of a limitation on the number of campaign signs in the right of way. If we want to limit other types of signs, and if that's not regulated, I would say I'm not in favor of limiting the number of signs in the right of way.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that point. If uh, if it's content neutral, basically, so.
And one thing I would like to add between now and whenever these codes are updated, there is a staffing budget bandwidth issue. I've never been to a city where we had the resources to go out and count every type of election sign there is out there and where they're at. We're lucky if we can go out and make sure that they're safe or that they're gone after the election. So there's a reasonableness test before I would suggest we adopt any amendments.
Uh, I agree, and I do remember our former director saying that it was largely complaint-driven. Enforcement was largely complaint-driven rather than, you know, going out and inspecting signage throughout the city. So I think we, we do recognize that resource constraint. Okay, thank you very much. Uh, appreciate it. And with that, we're on to item C. Ordinance twenty-four twelve ninety-one, creating a new chapter in the Lake Forest Park municipal code relating to the acceptance of donations. I believe this is our first touch because we postponed this from the other, from last week. Thank you very much, City Administrator Hill.
Thank you. And you're right, this is the first touch. Um, as council is aware, we currently do not have a mechanism within our code that allows for the city to accept donations. Um, this became very apparent, especially during COVID. We had some local businesses who wanted to donate money on behalf of our police department. Um, and we were unable, unable to accept that. And so there was an outside police foundation that our police department is part of. Donations were made there, put with a marker on it that it should be for the Lake Forest Park Police Department, and that's how we handled it. So using some ordinances that are out and about, as well as talking to the city attorney and her experience with other cities, what is before you is a crafted um, draft ordinance to allow um, donations to be accepted by the city. Um, and this is allowed by RCW thirty-five twenty-one one hundred. Now just go over the limitations that are in this draft ordinance and we can talk about it. Um, monetary and personal property under ten thousand dollars can be accepted by the mayor designee. Um, any monetary or personal property over ten thousand comes to the city council and all real property comes before the city council for discussion and consideration. Um, emergency and prohibited donations are identified in here. Emergency donations would be during COVID, we had a lot of things donated to, to the city. During an earthquake, there may be pieces of equipment that are donated to the city or maybe time that we can accept. Once the mayor declares the um, the emergency, uh, then comes the city council, it's ratified. And with that in place, we can accept donations um, from outside agencies to handle that, that situation. As far as fiscal implications, those would obviously be looked at at the time of the donation for consideration, you know, if it's a property donation, what are those fiscal implications? If it's going to be a park space? You know, is there maintenance O and M related to that? If it's monetary, if it was personal property? I don't know. And some police departments in the past have gotten cars for, through DARE programs. That's, that's not something we have here, but um, looking at that, what does that O and M mean to the city? And that would be part of the council's consideration on those donations. And then section two of this uh, draft ordinance uh, just directs the finance director to establish accounting procedures um, to carry out the terms of the chapter. So that is it in a nutshell, and I'm here to answer any questions and take feedback and come back to you. I will be back on Thursday, but mine's a lot easier.
Councilmembers, questions, comments? Councilmember Riddle.
Thank you. I did have a couple of questions around if a donation doesn't have utility to the city, could we still accept it and sell it at market value if that is what the donator would, would be okay with? Is that, is that something that we can put into when we're making an agreement for a donation?
I can get with city attorney and look at that. The way we have it set up now, if it doesn't have utility for the city, we deny it. We don't take the donation. That's how the language is currently written, so we'd have to check into that one and get back to you.
For instance, if someone wanted to donate property, but it wasn't going to be a good place for a city park or anything of that nature, I think we'd still want to honor their, their intent, which is to help the city out.
Councilmembers. Councilmember Goldman.
Yep. Thanks. Um, so I wanted to ask about the prohibited donation section, and I think it makes total sense about the conflict of interest that if someone has previously submitted or there's an ongoing permit application, then not taking the donation from them. But what about the other direction? So what if someone makes a large donation in January? And then in March, they submit a complex permit application. There might be the appearance of impropriety that their, the, the donation and the permit are still in close proximity. So I wonder if we should consider that possibility.
I think you make a very good point because it looks like you, you purchased your decision. Um, I will check with the city attorney on that. I think we could look to the appearance of fairness doctrine on this out there and see if it has any guidance, but I will check with city attorney on that one as well.
Any other comments or questions? Uh, City Administrator, I'll ask a couple. Um, could we actually solicit donations? Uh, and I think that's a little bit beyond what we have written here, but suppose we have the lakefront park up and running and we identify three features. Um, the kayak rack, the uh, bench, uh, some play equipment, and we, we are um, encouraging donations or we're seeking them from uh, Microsoft or the Gates family because of the history there, or the muckle shoot tribe because of the tribal history there. Is, is, I, I want to make sure that we have some flexibility to actually advocate for what we want. Um, so I, I just flagged that as a, as a topic to look at with the city attorney. I think we have some of that in there, but I wasn't sure if it was clear enough.
Yeah, I want to make sure we don't preclude ourselves from that. Obviously, um, there's been discussion about, you know, buy a brick or buy a bench or, you know, naming rights to something. And so we'll make sure that, that, that we aren't precluding ourselves from that, um, that we can go out and do that um, without being contrary to this ordinance.
And along those lines, um, because the Parks Board has been interested in this going back even to before we had the lakefront park purchase, if we could, um, if I could ask Cory to share uh, if not this draft, the next draft uh, with them, that would be uh, much appreciated as a courtesy. I don't think they'll have a lot of comments. They'll be very happy to know that we're actually moving on this and that we have a basis for it. But I think uh, just giving the, and giving them a chance to, if they want to comment on it, they would have that opportunity before we take final action on it. I would appreciate it. Councilmember Riddle.
Yeah. What you said kind of made me realize if we have any language in here that explicitly allows uh, staff, uh, you know, council, um, volunteer members on our boards to still be able to make donations, that that wouldn't disqualify them. I think we wouldn't want to, unless they have one of the other prohibited uh, criteria going on. Is that Phil, our intent?
I don't think anything in this draft would prohibit an employee or somebody on a board from making a donation. I don't, I haven't seen anything in here uh, other than like you said, if there was some type of a conflict of interest that we would have to evaluate at that time.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, you know, oh, you, it's kind of the same thing. You donated at the beginning of the year, you get a raise at the end of the year. We kind of want to make sure that like these things are really clearly stated that we have, we have our pay scales, we have, you know, all this stuff set up, we have our, our, our unions, and so those shouldn't be a conflict of interest, but I think it'd just be clarifying that those are not conflicts of interest, things like that.
Any other? Yes, Councilmember Furtianni.
Hey, thank you. Um, so Administrator Hill, thanks for your summary. And uh, just to clarify, I know it's in here, but uh, for members of the public, uh, to assure them that if they were to donate real property to the city that had, say, a conservation easement on it, um, that would be disclosed to the city council and we could accept or reject that donation based on whether or not, knowing that that uh, easement was on it.
Correct. And that, that goes to the point where if you, if it doesn't fit with the city's goals, you would want to reject that and not take that from that individual. They could explore other options um, with the property donations to other outside entities to maintain, maintain that long term.
Yes, with respect, any deed restrictions, I think would, that are permanent and would not be, would not be waived as part of that consideration. Other questions or comments? Or are we ready to move on? Thank you very much, City Administrator Hill. And I for one really appreciate your bringing this forward uh, in a timely manner. I think we can get this one done pretty soon and it will benefit us going forward.
Yeah. Um, at, for Thursday, I think what that touch will be is just more of a presentation for the public since nobody's here tonight to, to hear it. Um, if I have an answer or two from questions brought up tonight, I'll bring those up and then we'll expect, you know, a third touch before we take action on this.
Very good. Um, and this not being land use doesn't have to go through a public hearing or anything, right?
No planning commission involved in a public hearing.
Thank you. Okay, now uh, we're on to D, school zone fees and red light fees. Who is presenting? Mayor, please come forward. Should we call you Mayor Tom?
Yeah.
We're, we're, we're a tough, we're a tough bunch.
Uh, as part of the process of enhancing traffic. Oh, not on a minute. Thank you, Matt.
There we go. Um, as part of the process for enhancing traffic safety, as you know, we're discussing right now the question of traffic safety and camera enhancements on one seventy-eight. As part of our normal process in evaluating fee structures, um, we also consider traffic camera safety fines. Um, one of the fees, as they're actually called, um, the, I don't believe the structure has been refined or discussed since the camera program was, was started more than fifteen years ago. With the opening of three light rail stations here uh, on August thirtieth, uh, we all share deep concerns about cut-through traffic. We're already seeing the volumes going up considerably. One eighty-fifth has been closed, one forty-fifth is closed right now. We have issues currently that we are unable to address, but thinking forward, uh, House Bill twenty-three eighty-four gives us new authority in terms of setting traffic camera fees, traffic safety camera fees. And currently in the city of Seattle, traffic camera safety fines for, during, in school zones are assessed at two hundred and thirty
And currently in the city of Seattle, traffic camera safety fines for during in school zones are assessed at 230, let me get my 237 dollars. Our current number in school zones is 134. By comparison, the city of Spokane in 2021, I believe it was enacted a sliding scale in the school zones of between 217 and 450 dollars based upon speed. The new structure that takes effect on June 6th under HB 2384 will cap red light cameras at 145 and the school zone cameras a base of 145 that can be doubled to 290 dollars. I would say that given the numbers that we are seeing in school zones, Councilman Ferratani gave us some numbers recently. Double digit increases in our school zones in terms of citations over the last year. Year over year, actually, the trend over, let me pull up my spreadsheet here, trend over since 2017. Both of the school zones have have nearly, well, Brookside has doubled. LFP is up by 50%. It's very alarming. We're now seeing trends that are continuing to climb on double digit in percent increases each year. The administration is going to come back to the council here with a proposal to recommend a fine structure of commensurate with House Bill 2384. That is 145 for red light and school zone base fines, red, keep in mind that red lights can only be 145. But being consistent with the school and with the with the state statute, I think is essential. And then the administration is also going to recommend a fine structure for the first offense in school zones, 145. Second plus offense will will be doubled to the state statute mandate maximum of 290 dollars. In addition, any citation in a school zone over the speed of 31 miles an hour will be 290 dollars. Mr. Ferratani actually presented this material, but I'll read it again. Recorded speeds are high in our school zones, 137 of the citations in 2023 were for speeds in excess of 40 miles an hour while kids and parents are walking their kids to school. With top speed being 56 miles an hour, 980 more citations were issued for speeds between 35 and 39 miles an hour. And some of you may recall that the data that has been shared by the transport group and myself, and we've been talking about this for years. For each five mile an hour increase in speed over 20 miles an hour, chances of survival of a pedestrian or a multimodal user goes down dramatically. And over 30, 35 miles an hour, it becomes a very, very low chance of survival. So again, I think it's important for us to recognize that at 290 mile, 290 dollars or a speed over 31 miles an hour. This this regardless of whether the school zone cameras, camera zone timing is in effect, they're speeding over six miles an hour over an allowed speed and we need to get people to slow down. We've talked about this before. We all wish that the citations were absolutely zero. But the reality is the numbers continue to climb. One other thing I would say on a very positive note, I am, I have a tremendous amount of faith in our court system and our judge to consider circumstances that might not be something that we can consider in legislation. It also is of note that in 2384, the state requires that anyone who is on public assistance, and it's very specifically delineated, automatically their fine is reduced by 50%. The courts have done an excellent job. Judge Grant and her Judge Portnoy before her in groundbreaking work relative to making sure that we consider extenuating circumstances in this community. It's one of the benefits of having our own our own court within the community. In the absence of that, I would have a very different feeling about the higher level of fine. But we need to get the fine fines to a place where the the numbers are dropping off, they're continuing to climb. And I think we're going to see some data that's showing that once those light rail stations come online, we're going to see some dramatic increases even beyond what we're already seeing. This is the first time I'm bringing this to you. We'll have a formal consideration of it in the future. But I would like to see this council consider having this take effect commensurate with the authority that's granted to us under HB 2384, which takes effect on June 6th. That I'd be happy to entertain questions.
Thoughts, questions or comments?
I have one. Thank you for this because I think it's really important, but I am still concerned about SR 522. And I don't know what your plan, if that includes anything for for that roadway yesterday as I was we were holding a benefit yesterday and there was motorcycle upon motorcycle upon motorcycle speeding, probably 80 miles an hour multiples of them. And so either a flashing light, something to help control or monitor the speed. So there could be a better look at it. It's it's really bad.
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Good. As part of the evaluation, the speed study for 104 and 522, we're also going to be considering the engineering necessary for the placement of traffic cameras that are allowed under the new authority of HB 2384. Just a one caveat about the fine structure is that in the absence of a speed camera, a speed safety camera can only assess, we can only assess after the citation has been reviewed by by qualified individual, that fine up to 145 dollars. It is my intent, and I know all of you share the sentiment that we need to have more tickets being written by officers because of these. We do not have the staff for that currently. There's no question about that and and our PD does a very fine job of trying to keep us all safe. Going forward, we're going to have to allocate some of the resources to traffic safety officers. The reality is we have people in our community and outsider community that have had number numerous tickets for red lights, numerous tickets for school zones. And it doesn't affect their insurance. There's it's just they pay the fine and they move on. And so when an officer, one of our finest writes them a ticket, it's can be defined as much higher under state statute, and I can't quote that off the cuff right now. But it also affects their insurance as well as their ability to retain their license in the future if they have multiple. So for example, the individual that has multiple citations, and I won't say how many they are, that's more double digits in a school zone. If they've been written up by a patrol officer, they would no longer have a license and they would not be insurable. So it is important for us to recognize those people need to be held accountable. And I hear you, I heard it all day yesterday myself, and it's alarming that we're that that people are taking advantage of the system and and being very unsafe. To that end, we're going to move forward as quickly as we can with a program for the authority, under the authority we're granted under this statute.
Questions or comments for the mayor? Yes, Councilmember Ford.
Thank you, and thank you, Mayor for bringing this really important topic.
Thank you. And thank you, Mayor, for bringing this very important topic to the council and broadly in favor of this. Just a couple of questions. One of them is, is it possible to treat the commercial vehicles differently than regular passenger vehicles? Notably, because as you pointed out, a lot of commercial entities might just consider this the cost of doing business. As you say, it does not increase their insurance, nor does it affect their points on their license. So is it possible that basically the commercials could be treated differently in the fine structure?
That's an excellent question, Councilmember. Thank you for bringing that up. One of the challenges we have is that commercial vehicles, there's several layers and several facets to that kind of enforcement. One is the route and we need to have a an enforceable truck route system within our community. I've talked to mayors in other communities, including the city, I believe of Issaquah, where they have been writing 441 dollar tickets over and over again for people who are violating the truck routes and going through residential neighborhoods. We need to, we need to consider that as a separate program for from this. But at the same time, I think it's essential that we continue to look at what we can do working with our neighbors in Shoreline. They've been very receptive about truck routes. We had an issue earlier in this year and I reached out to them and they very quickly sent out notifications to everyone, say, all their trucks that were doing hauling for various projects, including sound transit, make sure you're staying on the designated truck routes. This is not okay. To your question about speed, I honestly don't know. Under the previous authority that was granted to us, you can have, which expires on June 5th, the the statute said that there the fine structure can be commensurate based upon trucking zone, trucking weight and and some other factors. I don't recall anything in in HB 2384 that gives that authority. So we'll have to check to see whether that authority stays in effect or not. To your point, you may recall last year that we were trying to get to a place where potentially heavy vehicles on 522 would have to have a lower speed limit than other vehicles. And there was some deliberation about that. It turns out there is a way to actually do that in terms of speed limits, but I'm not sure about traffic safety camera enforcement or the authority to enforce a higher fine. For example, if a PD officer, patrol officer issues a fine for speeding with a heavy vehicle.
Councilmember Good.
Okay. Sorry, okay. Okay, that's a really good point about the commercial vehicle. But how does that correspond to all of the Amazon trucks? Because those will go into residential neighborhoods. Those are commercial vehicles also.
I would think it would be based on weight, and so I don't believe those vehicles are over 10,000. The the regular Rivians and those, I don't think they're they're over that size. But I but I can't speak to that, honestly, Councilmember. I that's a good question. I think that it's important for us to have a program that is prescriptive enough that helps people in the aggregate slow down, not necessarily specifically trucks or specifically certain types of vehicles. It needs to be everyone to be thinking about. Larry is getting on a bus. Tracy is riding his bike across the street, hopefully not getting hit again. There's some other, you know, the and any one of us crossing any one of these intersections. I have real serious concerns about some of the intersections that we have to the north of us in Shoreline, and I will be talking with Mayor Roberts about that because I've seen some really alarming things at the crosswalks there. But we have to find a way to get everyone to slow down.
There are questions.
One more. Okay, I have an answer for you. So the Rivian vans, the largest one is a 9,350 pounds. So if the weight was 10,000, it would work.
There you go.
Councilmember Goldman, then Councilmember Ferratani.
Thanks. Yeah, I'm supportive. I do think we need to change people's behavior and that the trend lines that we're seeing in some in some aspects, they're improving and other aspects, they're getting worse. So I'm supportive. You preemptively answered my core question, which was about judicial review and how the our judge would continue to have the authority to lower fines if there are extenuating socioeconomic circumstances or related, so that that helps. With regarding weight, for me, it's it's physics and that, you know, an 18 wheeler going at 30 miles an hour has much more momentum than a standard sedan and will cause more physical harm. So to the extent that we could mitigate differential harm, but I also recognize that we we want, just in general, we need everybody to slow down more. But I'm, you know, if there are ways for us to have a differential impact on the vehicles that are the most likely to cause more substantial harm, I think we should consider that.
Thank you, Councilmember, and I agree completely. I think that the, of course, the difference between an 80,000 pound cement truck barreling through a red light as opposed to a fit, you know, a 2,300 pound car is very different. And I think the other thing too, that is really important to recognize is that if it is a commercial vehicle, that is backed by the insurance and by the good faith of the business, et cetera, et cetera, depending on the structure. They also need to be put on alert that their drivers need to be slowing down. And so there's a bigger picture. If there's a systemic or cultural issue that needs to be, you know, be faced. I think I think you're absolutely right, and I don't know how exactly we can address that. We can look into what the opportunities are here. Washington State Patrol has a commercial vehicle enforcement division. They were very gracious to come out a number of of years ago at my request and the administration facilitated this to take a look at the heavy vehicles that were traveling here on 522. And they issued a number of citations for vehicles that were were not compliant with safety equipment and a variety of other factors. But because of the fact that we have a very, very heavy freight route, two freight routes really, that are actually federally designated here and 104, I'm not sure is a freight route, but we have a lot increasing amounts of large vehicles. We do need to examine what we can do to encourage them to to be compliant and safer for safety, but also for noise and environmental considerations. And I'll I'll leave it there, but there's a lot more things to think think about. I would say that this fee structure consideration is just one more step on this, you know, two and a half year, going on two and a half year journey that we've been on and try to help our community be safer safer out there in in public.
All right, thanks for the for the for that explanation, Mayor. And I just wanted to follow up on a point that Councilmember Goldman touched on. I also appreciate Judge Grant's work on equity in the in the courts. But of course, as projected, you know, if we have these new traffic cameras, we'll be getting tremendous more citations. And with the higher fee structures, there'll be a lot more people wanting to fight their citations. Will the court have the capacity to handle this extra work?
That's an excellent question. We, City Minister Hill and Chief Harden, I touched on this briefly on Tuesday. And this administration is absolutely committed to making sure that we are staffing up appropriately. So there's not an increased burden and and other things have to be, you know. People are not overburdened and both on the side of the PD for the review of the citations as well as the court side in terms of processing and and the consideration for people with extenuating circumstances. And I just remind everybody, and I'll say this, all of, most of you know this, I'm sure. But Judge Porter was really groundbreaking in terms of her consideration and programs for people to be able to find ways to pay the fines or to do alternative kinds of situations. Now, I having said that the courts are incredibly consider of, I have confidence in our courts. I would say that there are certain things within the statutes that we we are immutable and we cannot change. So those fine considerations, which I think are very human and and considerate, gives gives the court a lot of latitude to find ways to make sure that somebody is not disproportionately impacted.
Comments and questions? Yes, Councilmember Goldman.
Yes, thanks. That actually made me think, I think there is a section in the bill that says that the people, currently the people who evaluate the cameras have to be police officers. But that moving forward, it could potentially be evaluated by civilian employees. And is that something that you've had conversations with Chief Harden about?
We have not specifically have conversations about that, City Administrator Hill, and I've had a very brief conversation about it. We recognize that staffing is going to be important for this, no question. Whether it's changes in the fine and fee structure or changes to cameras out there in the community. And we'll have, we'll be working very closely with the court and the PD to make sure that that they have the capacity to 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 take care of what needs to be taken care of. The the citations need to be evaluated within a period of time. You may recall Seattle made some mistakes in that regard. We've never done that as far as I know. But we can move forward and make sure that that the some of the fees are utilized for, and I was, I posited the question of whether we could use sort of a sliding scale. If there's a certain number of, a certain number of citations that are necessary to be reviewed, we need to have X number of people to consider it. And there is an opportunity here too, to provide additional employment for members of the community potentially.
Mayor, a follow up. So just to clarify, I believe you're indicating that we can use some of the traffic camera revenues for those administrative costs, whether it's review of the citations or or the caught additional court costs.
That is absolutely correct. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Bodie. I was remiss in not mentioning that that the fees that are paid to the city can be utilized for the review and processing of of the citations. I think Administrator Hill had a comment.
Just one other item to the police department. This is with the with the addition of these cameras and the increased work, we we are going to have to bargain the impacts of that increased work to the police department, whether that is a police officer doing the work is a resident, a resident, um, a non-commissioned officer. That's the word I'm looking for. Um, we will have to bargain those impacts and um I don't know what that's going to look like at this point in time. We had a meeting last week with our um legal counsel to start talking about bargaining, which will begin in June likely with police department. And we will be giving them notice that um this is something that we know we're going to have to bargain. It's a mandatory point of bargaining. So um, stay tuned. I don't know what that means at this point in time, but they're gonna, they will be weighing in on where these employees land within, you know, represented, nonrepresented type of a structure.
Thank you for that uh update. So we uh keep it in mind. Uh, any other questions or comments before we wrap this one up? Seeing none, we are done with this agenda item. Any other comments, colleagues, before we adjourn? We're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.